This time I'll call the July 2nd, 2020 meeting to order for Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have, our next item is the approval of the agenda. We do have one addition. There's a resolution that we will consider or discuss regarding the Governor of Kansas Executive Order. Which also may include calling a special session later, but we'll add that for discussion on that resolution under other business with that amendment.
One more.
Oh, yes. Yes, to consider the payment to Jefferson County, Missouri for a $17 court fee. And with those two additions, I'd move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the June 25th meeting. It also includes the expenditures of $1,771,547.93.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commission comments? Craig?
Yes, I spoke about it during the work session. I did have a couple of calls in one deal. Chapman had a Cars &amp; Coffee last Saturday, not realizing, I suppose, that they knew it was the Harvest. Wouldn't have been a problem turning on Fifth Street, but it's when you're turning a semi down a street that's got cars parked on both sides of the street creates a problem. And I'm just, I'll reiterate what the other commissioners said. I have gotten some other calls and we had probably eight or nine emails from citizens on the COVID-19 governor's order that's coming out today right now. That's all I have, Liam.
Okay, Ron?
Well, I have to appreciate the road crew out there getting those roads fixed up for Dixon County. They're doing an awful good job. Also, I'd like to read about the COVID issues. We've had a few calls also. And each call is important to us and each call, we look into it. Sometimes it's hard to answer those calls because we don't have a great deal of information, but believe me, they're very important to the commissioners and we do visit about it and gather what information we can get to make a good decision on. So, thanks.
Okay, this past week I intended a meeting at Sterling Hall. Brad was there, our county administrator, also Dr. Holmes and Chanel Docendorf as far as the county is concerned, but it was on the Sparks Grant that is available or monies that potentially are available for COVID-type relief and COVID-type projects included superintendents of USD and also some city managers, some other elected officials and school board members. And so anyway, it was a preliminary discussion that we had. And there's also a resolution that is regarding that that's on our agenda for today. Other than that, I did have calls, just like everyone else, and emails in regards to some COVID-related issues and what type of restrictions or what the county is going to be doing on that. And as Ron mentioned, I mean, there's people that kind of have their reasoning on both sides and trying to sort through things. It's a challenging time, but it's also a time to have emotional intelligence because I know, you know, people do have high levels of concern. And so that's all I have. Are there any comments from the public on any item that is not on the agenda? This would be your opportunity to speak to that if you'd like, and you just need to step to the podium, give your name, address, and what particular issue or comment you had. Since there are no public comments, we will move on to our reports of county officers. Our county administrator, Brad Holman?
I'll start out with the jail update. We had a two-week meeting on Monday and things are continuing to progress very well. All the underground conduits and plumbing, which constitutes a lot, has been put into the administering portion. And they were actually scheduled this morning at 5:00 a.m. to start pouring that floor out here because of the rain and the storm we had. I think they postponed that probably till Monday. So, but they had it all ready to go. The foundation walls for this north side with the booking area and the Sallyport and the garage were all installed this week and they're ready. We did a walk-through on Monday and the last mezzanine stairway and stuff for one of the pods is being installed then. So, the masons are finishing up the last wall inside there. So, it's starting to look like a jail inside. And hopefully by maybe next week, if we've got some time in the work session and the floor is poured out here, we'll be able to walk, go out and take a little time, walk through it and let you guys see what that looks like. So, they're working on the high-impact sheetrock up at the higher levels. And they're hoping to get the booking area and the garage area poured here in the next two weeks. I did provide you, there's two schedule sheets in there, the ones that are folded, that kind of give you the updated schedule of timelines for not only the jail portion, but the administering portion and the booking areas. So, we're on schedule to be done on time. So, everything's going well. We had made some changes last week in the parking area over on the north side of the county attorney's office. It was getting a little congested and I thought just a little bit dangerous over there. So, we arranged to have a contractor's park over there and reserve the spots in front of the county attorney's office for their staff and visitors. So, parking is becoming a premium around here, so, which we knew was going to happen, but so far everybody's been very good about dealing with that. So, we will continue to progress on that. In your package, you also have a letter from K-CAM. There's a couple of positions on the board of directors that are up this year for reelection. If you have anybody that you would like to nominate for that, I've got the forms and we can fill those out and get them submitted in. So, also last week, Craig had mentioned the intersection of Jeep and Old Forty. That, when that was put in the paper, Randy Lechron, who actually farms that, called me earlier this week and was very concerned about that. And he actually, I think he met with Barton.
Barton Lee?
Yeah. And they were, he was willing to voluntarily cut that back because he didn't want any hazards. I was very concerned about it. So, very much appreciate him doing that, calling in. So, and we'll look at that in the future. I was trying to do something on that intersection. Really, it's only a problem when they've got corner or feed installed planted there. So, but it is definitely an eyesight issue. So, and then you've got the year-to-date staffing report from Diane. Haven't had much activity there as far as changes. We do have a couple people, the sheriff's department's got a couple new staff members that they've been able to fill. And I think we've got one that we have tentatively hired for an administrative position to get somebody in for all that. So, other than that, the stuff we talked about in the work session on the Sparks funding and the MOU, I think that's all there is. It's been pretty busy.
Doug was here earlier. You're around the corner, Doug.
Right here.
Oh.
We have tax sales scheduled for July the 13th. And publications have all been done three times. And that's tax sales scheduled for the third time. So, I hope it takes place on July the 13th.
Okay.
The next matter is I've filed a lawsuit on behalf of the county for the collection of some iron that was not paid for. And there's another lawsuit that we have judgment for the county in regards to someone where their property hasn't been cleaned up. There's local home out there for property and that is accruing a charge of daily fee for that. So, that's in place. That's all I have for right now.
I might add on the tax sale issue, there are some pretty substantial expenses that have come about as a result of continuing that, both from Doug and publications and things. And we're going to take that out of the coronavirus funding as well. That's an expense that was incurred because of that. So, we think that's a legitimate expense that we can get reimbursed on from our CARES funding. So.
Thank you. As far as notices and communications, I mentioned earlier, but we'll just mention again, we have received several emails on both sides of the issue regarding masks and what the COVID, the steps that are being taken. Brad, I might just have you comment a little bit, just so people know the type of meetings and communications you have back and forth as far as updates, just in general, so people know that there is a process involved. It's very deliberate and structured, but.
Well, yeah. John Hopegren and I are communicating with Brian on a daily basis, if not hourly, most of the time. And we had a meeting on Wednesday morning to discuss the current conditions. We try and stay on top of things. Like I told you before, you know, Brian is in the hospital, both here and in Gary community, and he's seeing things and on top of it on a firsthand basis around up to the minute. And then he's also communicating with Dr. Norman at KBIHE and other medical directors or health officers around the state through their lists. And with the information we're all getting and comparing with each other and monitoring things, we're trying to stay on top of things as close to being real time as we can. So, I know it's not always popular to do these things, but it is a public health issue that we need to consider what's best for the public. So.
And then you've been taking care of some of this communication, not only through the newspaper, but our radio programming on KBI on a weekly basis.
Trying to keep everybody informed that way. So.
We do not have any resolutions that we're going to consider in this part of the meeting or unfinished business. We'll move on to other business. First is consider the approval of the county solid waste management plan for 2021, and that's pretty much housekeeping.
Derek, do you need to clean that for me?
Yes.
First of all, thanks for this opportunity to speak in front of you. The solid waste management program, or the solid management plan this year is no change from last year. Next year, we will have a five-year plan that will be updated with demographics from Census Bureau and change of dates and everything like that. So, next year will be a change, but this year there was no change.
And this was something probably you and Randy Barton, because you were in transition here a month or so ago and had a chance to review going into it. So, are there any questions or comments from the commission? We do need to have a motion to approve it officially.
I'll make that motion to approve the solid waste management plan.
Second it.
We have the motion. We have the second for approval of the Dixon County Solid Waste Management Plan for 2021. Is there any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Derek, thank you. And once again, glad to have you onboard and helping us out here.
Appreciate it. I'm trying to hear the texting and everything else.
Yes, and in this instance, Brad is trying to reach Dr. Holmes to just get some information to him. So, kind of appropriately, he is texting during the meeting. So, multitasking.
Multitasking.
The next item we have is a conditional use permit for pipe storage. This is at 1118 3400 Avenue. And so, we'd like to hear our summary reports on that. And we did also have information during our work-study session. Yes, so go ahead.
Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, Tim.
Yes, on the conditional use permit, this is for approval of a conditional use for a pipe refurbishing operation at 1118 3400 Avenue with the following conditions. Any noise, dust, or smoke-producing processes must be performed in an accessory building. Applicant must verify condition of antiseptic system serving the residence by environmental services. Road maintenance agreement for 3400 Avenue shall be required. Water runoff shall be controlled with the installation of a silt fence and hay bales or other such mitigation measures. Applicant must consult with the rural water district to verify if the existing water line on this property will not be damaged by the additional truck traffic. The planning commission and staff are recommending approval. Planning commission recommends unanimously to approve this proposal.
And as is standard procedure on a conditional use permit, surrounding property owners were notified and aware of this?
Yes, everyone within 1,000 feet of that park.
And in many ways, this is, you might say, an improvement, but an opportunity for a new business.
Correct.
And I know you did earlier, but do you or the applicant want to just kind of summarize a little bit what this pipe refurbishing is going to involve? And just a slight overview, please.
Basically, what it is, is taking used pipe from various pipe replacement projects across Kansas and Nebraska and Iowa that are currently occurring. That pipe will be trucked in and cleaned off with water. No chemicals will be used to clean these pipes. The pipes will be cleaned off and then straightened, if there were bends or whatever in them. And they will be stored as for wholesale sale on the property. And that's basically in a nutshell. The only comments that we had during the planning commission meeting was the individual that owns the property to the south was concerned about, just had a question about how to control runoff. And that's why the planning commission included item number four as the condition to address that issue. And that seemed to satisfy the property owners.
Are there any questions or comment from the commission? Okay, we could entertain a motion for approval or action on this particular item for a conditional use.
Someone?
I'll second it.
We have the motion and that's for approval. And second, the conditional use permit, PC 20-2. This is for DKM Enterprises at 1118 3400 Avenue. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I know Ron mentioned it earlier in our work-study session, but you know, we certainly appreciate and applaud efforts for economic development and starting a business of any size. It's good for the county and wish you the best.
Thank you. We look forward to being here. Thank you.
And this, I'll sign this on behalf of the commission, and so it just needs your signature, Tim.
And I'll trade you some housekeeping.
Do you want to explain to anyone what your process is?
Yeah, just real quick. Last year, we had the, you all approved the Jim Kruger's subdivision in north of town. This is the Chisholm Hill Estates subdivision. I meant to get your signature. He's, I haven't recorded it yet because he was still working on the road. And before I record it, I want to make sure I get all my signatures in place because he's about finished with the road. So, and so that's just for you as the chairman to sign off.
And that was passed previously.
Yes, that was approved.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Tim. The next resolution we have is to participate in the coronavirus relief funds. And Brad, if you could give us a summary of that, please.
The summary is the federal government, through the CARES Act, has appropriated money to each state to deal with the expenses resulting from coronavirus. Kansas received $1.25 billion. And it was allocated down to the counties, of which we should receive roughly $3.6 million sometime later this month. Part of the requirement for being able to receive managed state money is to pass a resolution that includes all the requirements which Glenn has in his hand. And you guys have had for the last week to review. There are a number of meeting requirements. There's some documentation requirements that we don't see a problem in biting by. And we would encourage you to pass that resolution so that we can get it back to them.
And there was a preliminary meeting on this that I referenced earlier, but there's, this will be something that's going to be, the funds available from this point to...
March 1st, December 31st.
Yeah, so we'll have to act quickly, have things in place, things documented, things will need to be approved. It'll be done in a very professional, methodical process of review, but also the opportunity is there to address some of the unforeseen things that have happened because of COVID-19. And you know, hopefully to empower and strengthen, whether it's the school boards or the cities and municipalities and the county. And so, we're going to have a lot of people at the table and any help we can get, you know, it's a good thing.
It's our understanding there will be three rounds of funding. This is the first. This is intended for municipalities and government entities, school districts. And hence the reason we met with the cities and the school districts yesterday. The second, third round will be more for nonprofits, economic development purposes, and individual business, things of that nature. So.
Okay, the resolution is 070220. This is for the County Coronavirus Relief Fund Resolution. I have moved that we adopt that resolution.
I'll second that.
We have the motion. We have the second for adoption of that resolution on County Coronavirus Relief Fund. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will need signatures also. The next item that we added was, we've had a resolution. We looked in at the, during our works, well, let me get the one first of all before we go to that. There's the $17 to Jefferson County.
Yes, it's a special check that the clerk's office drafted this week. And it's, my understanding, it was an expense the county attorney's office needed to get some certified court records from the authorities of Jefferson County, Missouri for a court case. And so, they needed to cut the check and get it to them to be able to get those records.
Okay, and it's for $17.
Seventeen big dollars.
So, we need a motion for approval of that payment.
I'll make a motion to approve $17 to Jefferson County.
Second it.
We have the motion. We have the second for approval of that payment to Jefferson County, Missouri, $17. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Documentations, $17. We're on both ends of the spectrum.
Okay, but all documented. The next item that we added is in regards to a resolution that we had preliminary, we drafted in regards to the Governor of Kansas Executive Order. The executive order had just come through. It's just been signed this morning. We had drawn that resolution up in anticipation of that order, not knowing what types of restrictions would be on there. It appeared that people would have to wear masks for everything without exception almost. And we did have a conference call with Dr. Holmes. His recommendation at the time was that we wait till that executive order comes out. And as we were talking to him, we had copies of that because it had just been signed this morning. And we have just briefly reviewed those. Couple of things we can do here. The commission can go ahead and act on the resolution that we drafted or modify it. I think one of the other options, and Brad has been in communication with Dr. Holmes, is that we could recess from our meeting. And he would rejoin us possibly at 11:45 to discuss this. So, that's one of our options. The other thing would be to have a special meeting at a later date. And the other part, I guess, would be to have no action on this. Do you have some comments or questions as far as the commission, a little bit the direction to go? Brad, have you heard back from Dr. Holmes?
I did. He said that he will see patients right now, probably 12 o'clock would be the soonest he may be able to talk to you.
So, we can recess and come back and discuss that. I, one of the things, I know some of the concerns that I had and that I've heard from people was, you know, the mask having to be worn all the time in all situations. And as, I skimmed over this five-page document and probably I need to reread it. Doug, do you have a copy of it?
I just got mine.
Okay. So, you know, we might take some time to read this and a little closer. And I guess, what are the wishes of the commission? We can wait till noon when Dr. Holmes is available?
That's what I'd like to do.
I agree with Ron. I, like I said, we just got it this morning. I read through it. It's not near as restrictive as what everybody thinks, in my opinion, what they thought it was going to be. But I'd like to, you know, read a little better.
We do not have any other items. We could adjourn, but before we adjourn, if we choose to meet back here at noon.
Could we recess?
Or we can recess.
Yes, till 12.
Till 12, or if we want to have some discussion among ourselves.
Yeah, we'd go into work session.
We could go into work session, say 11:50, and then wait a call from Dr. Holmes at noon. And we would have that conversation. And then at that time, since we would be in back, in regular meetings, if we chose to take action, we would have that opportunity.
If you had someone here that wanted to make a comment, you could do that now. They would have to come back too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there some comments or concerns? Yes, sir.
Sure.
Yes, and state your name and...
Sure. My name's Nathan Hilton. I live at 109 Northeast 10th. I want to state that I appreciate you all very much. I've been in leadership roles. It can be a lonely place. And whichever direction you go is criticized. So, I do not want to just stand here and cast stones. I don't think the decision-making in this process is easy whatsoever. Frankly, I don't envy you right now. I have not read the order. I was not aware that it had come out. I do not have a medical background. I think the minimum number of cases puts the burden of proof on the restrictions. I think that if we see other counties, I could see much more reason for additional restrictions. The battle cry originally was to flatten the curve. I think that phrase has kind of been forgotten. Now, it's to get rid of all cases and have a vaccine. The efficiency of masks, again, I'm not a medical expert. I think it's very much not conclusive. Even our own National Task Force on... Even our own National Task Force on this, it's not hard to find videos of them stating that they're not, they're not effective. A big concern of mine is, and again, I've not read the order, I have Cliff Notes and what others have, have said. I, I'm very concerned about youth athletics. Youth athletic workouts have already cut in half. I decided our kids won't, I'm not going to have them, especially my daughter with asthma, trying to work out with a mask on. I, I think youth are extremely low risk, many are struggling right now, ready to get back to normalcy. And I, I would love to see giving some recommendations, not requiring masks, especially if they're not going to be enforced. If there is any enforcement for there to be exceptions for those with asthma. As I understand it, counties do have the ability to reject or modify this order. And I, I would love to see simply protecting the vulnerable, let the healthy live, and let the kids play. And again, thank you very much, I appreciate all you do, and, yeah, I will, I will strive to help to do my part to get through this. I appreciate being able to voice my opinion.
Thank you, Nathan. Yes, any other comments on this particular subject?
Just what I had read, and Doug's looking at it now, I believe there's exemptions in there for organized athletic events.
Oh, wonderful.
And for, for people with medical conditions.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, some of that stuff that I think has been important to a number of the people we've heard from are, are covered, so. And I know at the meeting yesterday, that was one of the topics of discussion, is how do we expect kids to be running away to sprints and, and playing volleyball, basketball, football, and with face masks on?
Alton versus Alton.
Yeah, so, it sounds like that might have been covered being under order, so.
That, that is one thing that I've noticed is that it's, you know, some of the discussion was based on masks being worn all the time in all situations, and there are some exceptions and exemptions here. Any other comments before we recess?
No, I'd have to agree there, that, I, I'm just reading this, not per se, but it says persons who are engaged in activity recreational, regulatory, and they, as determined, cannot be safely conducted while wearing, wearing a face mask or other face covering, so they do, is my opinion. Athletes who are engaged in organized activities and still must maintain a six-foot, you know, if you're out running and stuff like that. So there is some give and take on, you know, outside activities and stuff like that.
Would it allow for baseball?
I would think it would.
Okay.
And on a dead of humor, just for a little bit on the subject, would it be nice to have these in speech class?
With masks on?
With masks on. Many of us weren't good in speaking, should never have us.
And you didn't even try it with masks on?
Yeah, there you go, there you are. All right.
Okay. I would move that we adjourn, and then we'll reconvene about 11:50-
In work session?
In works, study session, with the option of, we'll go into a regular meeting then at noon today. And, so that's my motion.
Second.
Have the motion the second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Or recess for a little bit. But we're doing that at noon.
Second.
We have the motion the second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. While we're waiting for Dr. Holmes, and, and we don't know for sure, because of the nature of his, of his appointments, he maybe isn't able to call us yet.
He just finished his last patient, he's going to look at his email, and he'll be calling us.
Okay. I, I recognize the argument and part of the discussion that it's personal rights and personal, you know, what you choose for yourself, you might say. But, you know, also very aware that, you know, Dr. Holmes has said, you know, it's more of a medical situation, and it's not always yourself, it's, it's others. And my concern was that the order, before we read it, that it would, it would just be blanket with no exceptions. And of course, I know whenever you start putting in exceptions, there's always something that comes up later, why wasn't this included, or, or such. But, but there are, under item three, exemptions from wearing the face masks or face coverings, and it describes those situations. So, that, that was one of the concerns that I had, is that there just would not be exceptions. The athletic thing, I know people are interested in the organized sports activities, you know, some of that, the schools, districts are going to have to work through. They're just in their early training portion right now, but, you know, there are sports that a six-foot distance isn't, isn't going to be practical or part of that. But, but that part, you know, I don't know that we have to address that today, and I don't, that's one of those where you kind of stay in your own lane. I think that's for the school districts to come up with proposals. Ron, do you have anything that you want to comment while we're waiting on Dr. Holmes?
You know, I, I, I err on the part of caution, and I come into another aspect of this because masks aren't unusual in the, in the agriculture business, we wear them all the time in our grain bins and so on and so forth. So, you know, that's, that's just part of life for us out here. Although there are people that have brought up good points of wearing them in certain circumstances, and I think there, there can be exceptions to those circumstances, athletics, for example, swimming, things like, it's common sense, these, these masks aren't going to work. So I think we have to be a little bit careful of common sense and, and reality with a mask. You know, I, I think the worst thing I had personally with these masks is, we had a young man work for us that was, in his job description told him to wear a mask, and he got, he got lungs damaged from, from the grain dust and stuff, and SUDs. And, you know, I spent a lot of time in district court, big Kansas, getting beat up pretty good. We won, but, but, you know, as individuals and people, we all need to take our full responsibility of the health and welfare of our families, or our neighbors, and our, and our, and our friends, I mean, that's, the guy upstairs, you know, he put us down here basically to look after one another, and that's, this is the case where we, we have to look after one another in this COVID situation, all the dollars, all the mechanical machines, if you're going to change that, so. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough deal, I don't think you can, I don't think you can write a perfect regulation on wearing these masks and when to wear them, I'm sorry. You hope, we all take that full responsibility and want to protect our society. That's kind of where I'm coming from, I know it sounds a little absurd, but give people an opportunity to know when there was a chance they need to wear the mask or where they don't need to wear the mask. I'm not a doctor, Dr. Holmes, we fully respect and want to make sure that we, we listen to him, he's the subject matter expert. I definitely don't want to sit here and act like I know more than him, he's quite an educated individual, so. With that, I'll stop talking.
Craig, I know you've kind of already said this, but anything to add for this portion of the meeting?
Oh, no, I'll, I'll echo Ron's view a little bit, it's kind of like when you go to a doctor, if you, if you didn't value his opinion or his thoughts, you'd go to another doctor, and I think Dr. Holmes has the best intentions, doing what he thinks is right for the county, and I'd have to agree with him. That's all.
Okay. Jason, I'm kind of assuming you're here to listen just on behalf of the city, but I didn't know if you did have any comments, I mean, we'd welcome anything, or if you're just-
So, so-
Jason?
Oh, Wilkins, and he's the acting police chief.
Don't, sorry, Jason, I didn't know who you were.
No, no problem, that's, that's probably good.
This is Russ's son.
Oh, that's okay then.
We're waiting on opinion to the Attorney General's Office before we put out anything public, but the conversations I've had with the county attorney's office, I'm pretty confident that we're like, positionally, I believe, to be that of requesting voluntary compliance from the public and education versus that of enforcement. There was a House Bill 2016 that was, that was passed, which I believe is the same bill that made you guys the ability to do what you're doing today, changed it from a criminal topic to a civil topic, which somewhat motivates things for us. Enforceable wise, it was going to be difficult anyway, you know, with current staff, and more staff of 12 tasked with around the clock police service for a community of 6,700. So logistics and resource management power wise, it was going to be extremely difficult, just for giving some of the exceptions, the medical, mental health exceptions that we only let waters initially. You know, for instance, if his daughter has asthma, how, how do we know that, maybe she carries an epidemic, otherwise I would guess that he doesn't carry a medical occupation around for what that, what a healthy issue might be, so we'll fully support businesses that are going to require masks. You know, potentially if somebody doesn't want to wear a mask and refuses to leave because of that, then it could go down a criminal path. That's my thoughts at this time, that could be subject to change based on the Attorney General's information, opinion, and that later today.
Okay.
I hate to say I agree with Russ's son, but-
Russ's son, no, Jason?
I think all my words.
No, I, I, you know, like I said, it, you know, it's, to me, it's a personal responsibility. I don't, wouldn't expect, you know, when you've got other problems to deal with, that you're going to arrest somebody just because they didn't have a mask on, you know, and they're, but now if they want to go into a business and they refuse to leave, they don't put it on, then it needs to be taken seriously. You know, where you draw the line at, it's, you know, blurred, but, I should say blurred, but not black and white, then it's, you know, kind of a gray area.
This kind of reminds you that, you guys all remember the seatbelt law back in the 60s as things were changing, how, how rough that got to be.
There's resistance initially, but. Kind of based on our discussions and so on, and Jason, thank you for your comments, too. There are exemptions here. The actual order is not near as restrictive as what some conversations were indicating, and, and actually what I anticipated and others may be anticipating. I think it does have the exemptions here. I think for this time I would move that, that we not take any action, but that we have this subject to review and, and the days ahead and weeks ahead, even days, if there's something that needs to be addressed more specific, that we need to add as an exemption, and Dr. Holmes will have had time to review it by then, but but I just move that we actually, I'll, I'll just start my motion now, that I, I would move that we go ahead and review this at a later date, and for now, not have any changes other than what the executive order indicates.
Second.
We have the motion, we have the second, is there any other discussion or comment?
I wouldn't make a comment, you know, Riley County's had spikes, you know, some cluster attacks, the commanding general has made Aggieville off limits completely, I guess, you know, after 10 o'clock, something like that. Salinas had an upsurge in Dixon, but, and I'm, I'm going to a wedding in Spetha this weekend, so I'll be going through Riley County. So I, I'd say it's wise that we don't put any restrictions on us because we could see that number go from eight to 12 real quick. You know, I'll just have somebody be systematic and bring it back, and, because we are such a mobile community anymore, that's all I comment.
And there is testing available that people can arrange at the hospital or through their doctor's office, and some of it is covered by either their insurance or Medicare. But anyway, some of that is available if people feel that need. We did have the motion the second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have the motion and the second to adjourn, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.
Dan, Brian, and Holmes is calling.
Well, go ahead and put them on.
Hello there. I'm going to put you on speaker.
Where we send that motion?
There you go.
Hi, Brian.
Hello.
Actually, not that we're impatient, but, and I've never had to wait on a doctor before. But, but anyway, we, we have gone ahead and passed a motion that we would not do any adjustments to the executive order 2052 from Governor Kelly, because she does have exemptions in there.
Okay.
But what we would like to do, I mean, you know, some, if you have any other recommendations or changes, or, you know, depending on how things go, we could revisit it, I mean, maybe someone will bring up something in the next few days or next week and say, why isn't this exempted, or, you know, can this be clarified?
The only thing that caught my eye was when they said private offices are exempt, I would disagree with that if they have multiple employees in there, if you're, and they're by yourself, and, and not around anybody else, fine, but if, you know, you can have a private office and you have 10 people in there and still not be open to the public and be putting those people at risk.
Still need to be able to social distance at six feet or more, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does say you should social distance six feet.
Okay, but if they're not, yeah, that's, that's the only catch that I saw when I briefly read it, but, you know, I'm sure the, the health, other county health officers across the state that I stay in contact with will probably be emailing this evening to discuss as well as see what this press conference says. And maybe it won't be anything, I don't know.
Well, and I know a lot of counties have, looks like they're going to back out of it or not support it, but, but anyway, but, but our decision for right now is that we'll stand with it and, and-
Good, I appreciate that, I think, I think that's the right decision for everybody, and, and sure, there's going to be some detractors, but I really, I really don't see how any, in my mind, county commission can, can read that document and say, we think it's for the betterment of our county not to do this.
Well, I, I did appreciate your advice earlier that you said, let's wait and see till it comes out, I didn't know it'd come out this quick, or, or had already been signed, but, 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 you know, that was, some of my concerns were alleviated once I read
Good.
some of the exemptions. So I think that's helpful, and I appreciate your work on it, and I know you're very busy today, so thank you for taking the time you did to call in. Okay, if you have any other thing, I mean, don't hesitate to call Brad, or, or-
Yeah, like I said, when I-
Me, or touch someone, or-
May get a chance to get ahold of these other folks, I'm sure we'll have some emails fired back and forth. Try to figure things out and see if there's anything that we need to think about differently, but I appreciate your patience, and I know you guys, you guys are getting a lot of pressure to make some hard decisions, and this is difficult on everybody. But I think if we're going to keep places open and keep the economy going, the only way to, the only way to do that, have everybody stay open, is to wear a mask, because if we get a, get a case or two in a place, that place has to close for a while, and we don't want to do that in person, school. And you saw that we were, we're working on that, so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, don't burn your fingers on your firecrackers this weekend.
Yes, I've not bought anything.
Thanks for listening, this is Bob, you this morning.
Do you guys have any questions to fire back?